Twenty first, twenty eighteen, you have a quorum and the agenda was properly posted?
Yes.
Okay, let's rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item next, item four is public appearances, public's opportunity to speak about any subject that's not a specific agenda item, but I think that is an agenda item, so, okay. All right, and I don't think we have anything else. So, item five is discuss and consider the minutes of the regular village board meeting of May seventh. Any comments, corrections, additions?
Move to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second to approve as presented. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Item six is a closed session. At this point, I'll move that the Village of Cottage Grove Village Board enters into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen eighty-five, par. one, par. and a half, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where paragraph B applies, which if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations. Operator license application. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there a second? We'll need a roll call vote. Troy, I'll have you to do it.
Troy? Alan?
Aye.
Almorn?
Aye.
Henrik?
Aye.
Limber?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Okay, we're in closed session. Anybody want to make a motion based on closed session?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, motion and second to approve any other discussion? If not, sorry. Is that going to be ruled?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, okay, if not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Do you'd like to talk to you for a second?
Yeah.
Do we need a motion to discuss on that second closed session item, or?
Oh, if the other people didn't show up.
Was there two or one other?
I thought there was only one.
I thought one.
Yeah.
There's two.
Two other.
There are two. I'm fine with the two no-shows getting denied. I mean, if they're not going to show up.
Yeah.
Just outright denial.
Yep.
I motion that we deny that.
Okay.
A second.
Motion and second to deny the other two applicants' operators license. Any other discussion?
Hillary, what was the other name?
I think it was just one.
Just one.
There is this one, okay.
Okay.
You were supposed to talk about two in the closed session.
Right, okay. All right, so there's motion and a second to deny operator license for Hillary. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. All right. On to item eight, unfinished business. Item eight A, discuss and consider building inspector contract and ordinance revisions regarding annual building inspection report. This was tabled from our May seventh meeting and we were doing some fine tuning on what we were doing. Oh, is there a motion to take it off the table from May seventh?
I move to take it off the table.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second to take item eight A off the table. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion is back on the table or back off the table.
Okay, um, in your packet, I provided you with a revised, very slightly revised draft of the agreement with Tom Beacon to serve as the village building inspector. There were two, there were two exhibits originally, which were permit fee estimates for residential and permit fee estimates for residential property. I then found out that there were other permits that needed to be attached, and so that was, I made that exhibit A one. Now, there, Tom raised some questions today as to, as to the wording here, which was, well, these amounts are not necessarily the exact amount, so if he has to go back a couple of times and, and, um, and so Lisa and I talked about this and talked with Matt. I also wrote back to Tom and I said, well, I think, or my intent was to cover those situations with the language that I have here, but if you don't think that I have, then come to the meeting tonight. And that was this afternoon. So, um, I don't know, Lisa, if you want to add to that, it's, it's just a question of how, I think that he wants more flexibility in terms of, or of making sure that it's clear to people that if you come for a new deck and, and it's, and it's fairly straightforward, then it's a hundred and thirty, but there could be additional charges. Lee also asked for a specific language that he would propose, and we didn't get that either, but that was just today.
I think what he's getting at is if you inspect something and it doesn't pass, and then he gives them a couple of days to fix it and has to go back again, it's the return trip that he's charging for, is it?
Not necessarily. So, I'll give you a couple examples.
Okay.
So, a deck, let's do a simple deck. If it's just a replacement of an existing deck and there's not new footings and that type of thing, then it's just the permit fee. If it's a new deck and there's new, you have to put new footings and all of that, then it's a two inspection, because he's going to come and inspect the footings, then he's going to come and inspect the, the deck. So, it's two, so that's why the fee would be a hundred and thirty. Another example would be, say you're remodeling a kitchen and you're actually moving structured walls and plumbing, electrical. That would be a case where it would be possibly, you know, a couple inspections for the roughing and then the finish.
Okay.
That's where he's getting at. Well, when they come into us, you know, we look at it and they fill out the miscellaneous permit and they list the contractors. Well, I'm not a builder, I'm not, you know, versed in what's going to need a second inspection and what isn't. So, that's where the confusion comes in on the fee schedule. We want it so that people are aware of it, but there may be a case where there's something else. So, that's one of the things that we're looking at. The other would be to change our process. Right now, we have the permits paid when they drop off the application, then they go to the building inspector. The other thought would be to have the permit come in, go to the building inspector, put the fee on it, and once it's approved, we can call them and say, your permit is here, you can pick it up, it's going to be this amount.
And other municipalities do that sometimes too. I mean, they say, okay, it's this amount because you're doing this.
Yeah.
Well, Lisa called around and it's kind of all over the board, you know, it's, we're not really getting a solid or a, you know, this is the way to do it, so, and I think there's some flexibility there.
Yeah, and I think the way you've got it worded probably does cover those situations. I mean, just, I understand Tom maybe wanted to spell that out, but if he hasn't come forward with his proposed alternative, I'm fine with this.
I would say probably eighty-five percent of our building permits are pulled by contractors. You know, it's the ones, and they're aware, they know what has to happen, so they know what the fee is most likely going to be. It's the people that are, you know, do-it-yourselfers that aren't aware of what may have to happen.
And it's tricky to put in language that kind of goes, well, these are the fees, but yeah, right, exactly. So, we're trying to give notice, but yet have retained flexibility.
All right, I mean, I'm fine with this. Any thoughts on this? And I think it kind of addresses what we were looking for, is to have a little bit more solid record-keeping.
And the reports.
Yeah.
I thought we had talked about the reports being given to us more than just yearly at the last meeting.
Did we change it to calendar year or something? Yeah.
Well, the board can request.
Anytime, session time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Provide, yeah, thank you, Joe. Provide reports, documents, and files relating to building inspection as may be requested from time to time.
The other thing that Tom has changed is his notice that goes out for inspection is now in triplicate, so it's going to say the date that he inspected, what he inspected, and if there were anything that needed to be changed, we're going to get a copy of that with his monthly fee.
Good.
And then I will file those with the appropriate property files as well.
Okay. Outside of the paper copy, do you get electronic reports from Tom, or are you producing those?
I don't think.
I'm not getting anything electronic.
Yeah, all right, so, I mean, I'm just saying that we have staff that's putting together an electronic report, just as long as everyone's aware of that.
Yeah, and if it's a carbon copy, I'd make a hard copy because carbon will disappear after a while.
Yeah, my intention is going to be on that spreadsheet that we compile, that is going to have another column in there that will show the date of inspection and what was inspected.
So, right now, you're putting together that whole thing?
Right, well, he has one on his end that he sends in from his bill, but we keep track of it too. For one, we need to know the breakdown from miscellaneous to residential to commercial or demolition. But yes, we compile that, that spreadsheet, and it gives us the breakdown of the fees and what's happening for a couple of different purposes. We send it to the assessor monthly so that they know what has changed in the village and for record-keeping, obviously, and so we know what has come in, what hasn't, what has been paid for, what hasn't, as far as the building inspector goes. So, there's a couple of reasons why, why we do it.
Lisa, do you have an issue with, I mean, you gave a couple of alternatives, is there, do you have a preference? Where would it be, make more sense to have him get the permits and then give them to you, and then they get approved, or they get processed, and then he says, here's how much you owe, or what's the, what's the better?
I think it's less confusion for whomever is getting the permit. If we get the permit, take it, send it to the building inspector, get the fee schedule of what it's going to be, and contact them. It's, it's no more work than what we're doing now. I'm contacting them one way or another, and usually when it comes in, you know, I either have an email or a phone number, and we haven't had an issue with people picking up permits. So, I don't see an issue of having to pay for them the time that they get them versus paying for them when they drop off the application. So, my preference would be that, to send it to the building inspector first, because then if there's something, they don't have to come back in. If there are contractor, that's a waste of their time sending somebody in or coming in themselves, then they can just pay for it and pick it up in one stop.
I mean, I agree, that sounds more efficient, then you're not guessing at amounts and things like that. Any other thoughts? Okay, so that language of going to the building inspector first, is that in here? I'm trying to find.
Well, yeah, I, I, what I will do is just make sure that that's spelled out in the agreement, and, and then if that's, if that's still an issue, then we still have to take the next step, which is to make some revisions to the current code, section one thirty, to reflect what we've got here. So, if it's an issue, I'll come back and tell you, and I, I don't think it will be, but we'll find out. Otherwise, I'll finalize the contract and get it signed. If that's your direction.
Yeah, if that's reasonable to approve this with the addition of what we talked about, or do we need to table it until you come back with that in it?
It's your call.
Any thoughts?
I guess I'd feel more comfortable if we actually had the contract.
Yeah.
Okay.
And looked at the full agreement rather than, no longer the assumption these changes would be made to all of our satisfaction.
Right, so, basically a motion to table until we get that language added in?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to table.
Okay.
Until we get that update.
First, I'll second. Okay?
I have another question.
Yeah, sure.
So, will this be signed yearly then, or?
Yeah, yearly, yeah.
So, like, when he comes in with the yearly report in January, then we can go through this again? Or would it be, so would it only be like six months, or, because January's?
Well, this time, yeah, this time, it's, it's a little bit shorter, but the idea is that we're going to get on a yearly cycle.
So, is there wording in here then, like, like, January fifteenth, it has to be reviewed, or?
Yeah, I thought there was, but it's a.
Am I missing something?
I thought I saw it in here, but we know it's.
On January fifteenth, the yearly report shall be fired or filed. I saw that.
January fifteenth, this year.
Okay.
That's not the, the. Contract.
Oh, okay, well, the village, or, the building inspector serves at the pleasure of the village board. So, we did not go with a specific year contract or a five-year contract. It's, the inspector serves, I mean, that language comes right from our ordinances.
Yep, under that termination section, I think.
Yeah.
Termination.
Well, under appointment, and, you know, I think the idea is that with any type of individual like this, that if you, if we have concerns, then those concerns need to be given to the individual, see if he or she clears them up, and if not, then the board is open to, but I mean, this is definitely an at-will type of contract.
Yeah, I saw the ninety days in here.
Yeah.
But doesn't it have to be reviewed yearly then for the fees? I mean, because are the fees part of the contract?
Yeah, they, well, let's see, why don't we just say that the board, I think it already says that the board is supposed to review the fees on an, on an annual basis, but I'm not sure that I necessarily want to make that part of the contract, because I would prefer to just, you know, have that be a separate action by the board, but we could point that out.
No, that's fine, I just.
Yeah.
Since we were doing the fees at the same time as the contract, I didn't know if they all went the same way.
Okay, okay.
All right, so we have motion and a second to table this until the next meeting, to add the language in there regarding the fees and the process for determining an amount. Any other discussion?
Just moving forward, I would prefer that if the reports come in, they come in electronic format, so we don't have Lisa or whomever typing them up.
Yeah, I mean, that is really the inspector's job, yeah. And I mean, if he doesn't want to do it electronically, he can have somebody else do it for him.
Actually, he, he does.
Okay.
He's got, he hired someone like a year or two ago.
Okay.
That's the electronic component.
Okay. All right.
So, we're not getting electronic components.
Yeah, that's what we just discussed, that Lisa's not getting electronic.
So, we're not getting it electronically, and, so, whether you hire anybody or not, we're not getting it, right?
You get the annual.
We get the annual report electronically, I mean, but.
The other stuff, we're not getting.
The inspections, you know, that are in triplicate, that's not electronic.
Right, so you need somebody to scan them in and email them to Lisa, is pretty much, is that all you need?
It doesn't make a difference, honestly.
Because you're going to do something with it on your own anyways.
I'm going to do, I'm going to have to file it.
Because you have other.
I've got other things that I've got to do.
So, you've got to handle that paper anyway.
Yeah.
Okay. There's no advantage.
I don't think that's.
Not really.
All right, so, motion and a second, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Moving on down here, let's get back to the agenda. A B, discuss and consider police school resource officer program agreement, and that should also be in your packet.
Yeah, it was in your packet, along with an explanatory memo. This program has been around since two thousand and eight, and for a substantial period of time, it was a three-way agreement with Manona Grove, the city of Manona, and, and also the village of Cottage Grove, but up until a couple of years ago, it was the Manona officer served as the school resource officer, because we didn't have enough police people, officers, to populate that position. Then when the department split off, we entered into a contract with the school district for our own officer to be in the school, and then, at the time, there, I guess there wasn't really the interest to, to go with the three-way, but then subsequently, there was additional discussion, so the contract in front of you now is a three-way contract with the school, the village, and the city of Manona. The city of Manona officer will be primarily serving in the city of Manona, the village officer primarily in the village, but it does contain language which allows them, in the case of, if, if something happened where they needed some assistance, the officer could go from Manona to Cottage Grove and vice versa. Dan, is that?
Yeah, I think it's basically for reciprocity and mutual aid and things like that, and indemnifies us that we have to go to Manona and vice versa. It's just a lot of legalese that they wanted added into it.
Okay.
And occasionally, our officers are like at football games anyway.
Right.
I've seen our officer there as well.
Right. When you say they, it's the board that's asking for this? Uh, no, it was the city of.
No, 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 okay.
And, and I really don't have an objection to that, I mean, that we would have included that kind of language if it had been a three-way agreement, but I don't think that, it's fine.
Right, it just makes sense to have, obviously, have that flexibility.
But if there was a situation, wouldn't mutual aid kick in the play anyways here?
Yeah, they, the Manona Police Department wanted to make sure that the language was very specific as to duties and when you help, as far as any type of, it was more of to indemnify the various municipalities involved.
It was the Manona attorney who was responsible for this, you know how they can be.
Okay.
So, anyway, I've gone through the agreement, it's essentially the same except for the last two paragraphs, and then, as Dan said, that fits into the indemnification of the language.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the police school resource officer program agreement with the updated language.
Second?
Motion and second to approve any other discussion?
Just have a question. The dress code, so it's a man-uniform position, are they typically in uniform or out of uniform, or?
They're typically in what's called a soft uniform, so they're readily identifiable as police officer, but not in a uniform like eyewear, so that you're more approachable to students and that type of situation. Are you talking about the regular duty wear of the school resource officer?
Correct, yep.
Yeah.
But they do have access to all the same equipment, right?
Well, she's wearing the necessary equipment when she's working.
Perfect, thanks.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. To number nine, new business, discuss and consider direction to the chief of police regarding juvenile issues and enforcement matters at seven hundred block of Willow Run in Village Hall. There's a memo from the chief in there, Dan, if you want to summarize kind of again, I guess, the highlights of what some of those have been and how long they've been going on.
Well, I just know that the three years I've been here, it's been a problem with, you know, some juveniles who were smaller and are now getting bigger and are getting involved in a lot more issues that require police attention, and, and we've had twenty-four calls for service as of the compilation of this memo in the past year, I believe it was, and eleven of those were juvenile complaints, six disturbances. We've had the, the assault that occurred on village property, and, and whenever we deal with them and they're out there hanging out on the property and doing whatever they're doing, if we get a complaint, we generally tell them, guys, play in your own yards or go up to Willow Run Park, which is less than a third of a mile up the road. So, that, I know I keep on hearing from village staff up here that they deface property and they're loud and they are profane, and I think those are issues that the village staff could speak to, I don't have to deal with it on a daily basis, but I do know that at some point, I suggested once, just put up no trespassing signs, and then, once they got put up, I wasn't real impressed with their placement so close together, and they weren't legally enforceable by what they said on them, so I, I think the optics of the signs at that point were a little bit maybe too harsh, but, and I agree with some people's concern about them, but, I mean, if some of the Village Hall people want to talk about their concerns with what's going on.
Yeah, I mean, I can remember, and the chief before you also having to go out and chase them away, and they were literally bouncing off the walls disrupting meetings, even if they weren't up to something else, but, Matt, what are your thoughts?
Just the nuisance issues were kind of one thing, it was more the escalation, you know, finding out about all the calls for service, and, and then the violence issue that happened, I think in March.
Yes.
So, I think, you know, they, they do get basketballs, tennis balls, full of mud, and throw them at Village Hall, get their hands full of mud and put them on windows. You know, it's not, that, that, that's not as big of a deal as the police issues, but it is a nuisance, you know, they're knocking on our windows and running away and that sort of thing, but.
Any vandalism of cars, any?
No, they're getting to that age though, where, you know, you go out there and tell them to please knock it off, but then it's like, do you really, how many times do I do that before, no, you're, you're a target, you know?
Right.
I, I don't know.
Have they ever come in the hall?
Yes, we had one situation where we had a young juvenile come in, had an issue with his neighbors, and we had to call the PD, and luckily Jess was on duty and had background with this juvenile, and she came and helped him with the situation.
Are these folks in or rent a property?
I don't think their owner occupied, I think they're rental properties.
I'm assuming that whoever owns the properties, if they're doing issues or having issues with property across the street, I would think the property's also having some issues.
I don't know those specifics.
In all of the calls that you've had, have any citations been issued at all?
Yes.
No impact at all?
Well, there's, there's multiple kids involved, and some are, have a lot more police contacts than others. My idea was to put up something visibly back there, you know, that says, basically, if you have official business or whatever, you know, you're welcome, obviously, but if not, play somewhere else and/or hang out somewhere else. And again, that's why we have parks, and I know Deb Winter looked into the liability part of it and talked to the insurance company, Matt could probably speak to that.
Yeah, there's a memo for that in the packet as well, and they didn't have concerns liability-wise, so that's, that part's not an issue. They, they did suggest the same sort of situation that Dan's mentioning regarding the signs.
Something that's worded different, more enforceable and like, easier, more visible, is that?
Yeah, I think they suggested at first, no trespassing, and then no lawyer, no lawyering.
Okay. Yeah, and obviously, these kids are old enough to read, so without those signs, you're essentially inviting them over here because they're used to coming over here.
Do you have any issues anywhere else in the village?
Yes, not like this.
The same type of children, or, children.
With village property, or?
Yeah.
Oh.
Well, not with village property.
Yeah.
No, and the schools. No, and the schools, yeah, we've had quite a few vandalism issues, broken windows, defacing of property, things like that. And some of the same kids were involved.
Okay. If they're playing here and they get hurt versus playing at a park and getting hurt, what's the difference in our liability? There isn't any difference at all, correct?
Correct.
I guess I have a... Personally, I have a problem that, you know, no trespassing and at Village Hall, a sign goes up and, I mean, welcome to the village of Cottage Grove, no trespassing. And it doesn't sound like it had a whole lot of help or impact that... Did they continue to come over even with the signs there?
I mean, when I... It was miscommunication because I received the email from John asking about the signs and I didn't know they were up. So, you know, when we took a look at it and they were down within six hours that day. So, but during that time, there was some sidewalk being replaced and they did vandalize that sidewalk. The contractor had to come back and repair. You know, it's just things like that, you know, it's... So...
I'm not sure that any sign we would put up other than a slight cone fight is going to keep them out, it sounds like. I mean...
I don't know, can you speak to enforcement with what the difference would be?
Yeah, for no trespassing statute in Wisconsin, you have... It has to say no trespassing and it has to be the owner declared on that sign also. So we would need to have legally enforceable signs put up if that's what we were going to do is ticket someone for being on the property. But it's probably going to take a complaint type of issue like they're disturbing us or they're facing property. Well, then we would show up and it's either a trespassing or it's a vandalism type of thing, so...
I mean, with no loitering signs? I mean, that's to me sounds a little more friendly than pull up the Village Hall and says no trespassing.
Sure, you could put something up like no loitering, official business only type of sign, maybe?
Right.
Yeah.
Something that's enforceable.
We have a loitering ordinance?
Yes, we're... You're not allowed to loiter or prowl in a place.
Better leave.
And then, it provides that a police officer shall prior to any arrest for an offense under this section afford the person an opportunity to dispel any alarm which would otherwise be warranted by requesting the person to provide proper identification and explain his or her presence and conduct.
Okay.
So, it's... We're just... We're looking for something that would be effective and...
Right. So no loitering, official business only was probably a better idea?
I had an idea of maybe, what if it's a time... A certain timeframe? That certainly wouldn't take, you know, mentioning maybe the Village Hall's hours and involve that. But speaking with Dan, you know, there's various night meetings here that would be hard to post something like that. And that's something that would take care of the nuisance issues, but that's not really the bigger concern, you know? It is what it is, but...
I'm assuming the parents have been contacted then too and no...
Yeah, it's required.
Okay.
Yeah. The contractor, it would have been nice of the contractor that had to redo the cement work here on our property, would have gone over there and talked to them and/or given a bill to the parents, frankly. That's what happened to me when I was a kid, so...
That makes too much sense.
Shouldn't have written my name in the cement...
That makes you even find yourself.
Hey, Matt. For the... So, last summer, was it more of a nuisance because the kids would be home all day or is it just all the time?
I mean, it's definitely when the weather's nicer and, yeah, when they're off, but...
So is that why you're thinking the time period?
That was really just... I was vacationing in Door County and going through the parks and they had posted times. And I thought, oh, maybe that would be a solution. But I talked to Dan and in his opinion, that wouldn't help, so...
Couple of signs that say this is under video surveillance and...
Right.
If the speedway radar enforced.
So you're talking signs across the path is pretty much where you're talking?
I think so. And maybe not put them so close together and aimed at one house would have... Yeah. The optics, like I said, were just poorly placed.
We wanted to come to the board with this because, I mean, we got some blowback on the wording of the other sign and that wasn't... You know, we would handle it differently. But we just need to know if you want us to pursue this, if... Or if we just live with it or what?
I'm fine with the no loitering, official business only. I think that's a better probably worded option.
Well, if we have official business only, do we need to even have the no loitering on it at that point?
I don't know if kids understand no loitering better than official business, but...
Yeah, I think if you're putting... And then you could also put the ordinance for loitering up on there and that would make it enforceable in my opinion.
So you cite an ordinance number and then...
Right. I don't think there's an official business ordinance that we could use.
All right. And maybe make a daily stop at the house. It seems to have the most people and just, you know, give them a new ticket every day.
Yeah.
Encourage them to go someplace else and play.
Yeah, use a park for a park and not Village Hall for a park.
I mean, even with that, somewhat obscure language in 2081, there are two other sections that talks about if you're asked by a police officer to move in and you don't, then you can be cited for loitering. So maybe that's what it's going to take.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve different signs with the no loitering, official business only citing also our ordinance number that applies to that. Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, motion then second. Any other discussion? Have we gone with one sign, two signs, four signs? Is there a requirement how far apart they got to be or just... I'll have to look into that, I guess, and...
I know for no trespassing, there's a requirement. I don't know for loitering.
No, I think loitering at the end, maybe you could just say at the discretion of staff. I mean, let them see.
Will they be...
Yeah, we don't want a fence back there that says that, you know, right? Sign, 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 sign.
Yeah, will they be on separate posts or will they be on the building?
I think you put them on a post.
Yeah, put them on a post.
Up by the street.
Right.
And would it just be in the back?
No, you probably want to put a couple in the front too, so it's not pointing specifically.
Yeah, I mean, you could put one on either side in front, whatever.
And then we could set up a couple of game cans to watch who's pulling the stakes out and destroying the signs.
Okay. So, yeah, I'm fine with that motion to add discretion of staff as to placement. Does that work for you? Okay. All right, motion then second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
And it's chapter 208.
Okay.
All right. Item 9B, been a long time coming. I remember when Chief Labor was hired, that was one of his first priorities and it's personal recognition of the Cottage Grove Police Department for accomplishing an accreditation status. And that's no small feat and I'll let Chief Labor talk about it a little bit, but congratulations to your whole department.
All right, thank you. Yeah, on May 11th, we became fully accredited by the governing board of the state of Wisconsin. So the department has achieved that official status, which is pretty impressive. There's only 41 departments in the state of Wisconsin that are accredited, two in Dane County. So it was a lot of hard work and it will continue to be a lot of hard work because you have to, every year, prove that you're doing the same thing you did the first time you got accredited.
Right. How many hundred policies did you have to write?
500 some, different standards.
No small job.
Yeah, it's a big job and it's going to keep on continuing to be a big job, but it means a lot, I think, to the department to know that you're accredited and viewed by your peers as professional and prepared. And I hope that it means a lot to the community also.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
What?
Do you have a... So you can email?
Did you get a certificate or anything or some kind of a...
You're going to get it. They're going to give you one in June, so I could contact you then. Okay.
Thank you.
If I can ask, what is this accreditation? What does that do for the citizens of the village? I mean, are we a better police force than someone that isn't accredited or?
I think our insurance costs less.
I know when I was police chief in Milton that we got a substantial discount on our insurance, but that was a different insurance carrier. I don't know about the... Is it the league here? Right? I don't know about that. What it means is it's important for the village from a liability standpoint because we know that we have all the policies in place that are required and that the officers are following those policies. So that's important from liability standard and professionalism and that you have all the proper equipment and training and you're following those standards. It's pretty important to make sure you're doing all that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Discuss and consider request from Sherry Kreischer for the village to take over responsibility for American Pride campaign. Sherry, are you... Okay. Spot up here.
Sherry, this should be fairly up to date. There's a... Your initial email to Matt and I was included in the packet, so...
Okay. And then I have an invoice for you for this year's purchase. I'm Sherry Kreischer. I am the self-designated coordinator for the Cottage Grove American Pride campaign. I live in the town of Sun Prairie and I apologize, I'm going to be using notes so I keep on track because otherwise I may drift off. So I apologize for that, so bear with me. But I am a resident of the town of Sun Prairie. I have a Marshall address, living in the country, but I have worked 17 years in Cottage Grove, been involved in many organizations within Cottage Grove, volunteered for different events. So I pretty much call Cottage Grove my community. I brought Mark Kudrina with me. I'll let him introduce himself.
All right. I'm Sherry's appointed assistant. I'm the one that actually physically puts the flags up for and then taking care of that for her. She originally, I think, contacted me through the fire department. I've been on the fire department for 27-some years. But it got to be such a headache to try to get that coordinated, I just... Sherry and I just go out and do it some Saturday morning and...
Get her done.
Just get it done.
Okay. So the reasons for our appearance tonight is for a proposal to the village board, the responsibility and commitment to manage the displaying of the American flags in Cottage Grove for the designated holidays. I see many new faces here, so I'm just going to give you a brief summary of what the American Pride campaign is all about. And this will be a review for some of you. So, going back to 2015, I became aware that Cottage Grove was not displaying flags during specific flag holidays while surrounding communities were proudly displaying and flying the American flags. I presented my concerns to the then-village president and I was informed that village budget and that the public works had no equipment to accommodate and maintain the displaying of the flags. As the daughter and niece of a father and uncles who have served, a mother of three children who have and are currently serving, two of my children live in Cottage Grove and are active members of the Wisconsin Air National Guard. I'm a marine grandmother, I'm an air force aunt, and I have friends who live in and are presently and have served in this community. And the absence of the flags, I felt, was unacceptable. So June of 2015, I came before the board and was granted approval to display flags for the 4th of July holiday. Four flags were placed at the intersection of Cottage Grove Road and Main Street with volunteer help. This is one of the original flags. I purchased the flags. Volunteers who wanted remain nameless supplied the brackets, the poles, and attached the brackets to the stop-and-go lights so that we could at least get flags off the ground and have them displayed for traffic that goes between the two interstates so that we had some representation for the July 4th holiday. To quote a phrase, "If you want to go fast, go alone, but if you want to go far, go together." September of 2015, I was granted the approval to... By the board to begin the Cottage Grove American Pride campaign. Fundraising began and volunteers committed to helping getting flags in Cottage Grove displayed. Representative Gary Hebel donated 16 flags. The list of volunteers is long, so I... In order to not miss anyone, I just want to thank those who helped get this campaign off the ground because they know who they are. And some of them are in this room. Okay, so fundraising began and volunteers committed to helping get the flags in Cottage Grove displayed. And with the money that was raised, additional brackets and poles were purchased for the 16 donated flags. The locations for the flags are Cottage Grove Road and Main Street. We have eight flags. Again, we post those on the stop-and-go lights. Cottage Grove Road, Damascus Trail, and Donacul Drive, there are four. There are two on a light post on the east side of the stop-and-go and two on the west side of the stop-and-go. Cottage Grove Road between the post office and the bank of Sun Prairie, which is in front of the Marketplace Shopping Center, there are four. And then at the Commerce Intersection, again, there are four. And they are again on light posts east or north and south of the stop-and-go lights. Now, the display of flags that are in the old town area of Cottage Grove, I want to thank RG Houston for jumping on board when I started this campaign. And he had... They have continuously maintained and displayed the flags for the designated flag holidays in that area. As Mark said, he's been with me almost from the beginning, so I'm going to let him address how we have put the flags up the past two years, two and a half years. And that is one of the reasons we're here today with our proposal.
Okay. The first year we did it, we actually borrowed a lift with a bucket, with a basket on it because we had to... I think we added a few brackets and had to repair some that needed help. But that's kind of a time-consuming... You know, it was a construction forklift. Took a lot longer than what it takes me now. When I go out and do it, I can do it in about an hour with just an extension ladder. Just leaning up against a pole, going up. The flags don't even have to be attached, they just slide into the brackets and we're done. But...
And for safety purposes, I sit behind him with my vehicle.
Yeah, Sherry's usually there.
And orange cone because that I was told we need to be sure that we have the traffic aware of what's going on. We do it at about 6:00 in the morning. He usually beats me there, so he starts at Damascus Trail and I usually end up meeting him at the main intersection, but... But the fact that he, he has to use an extension ladder and for safety purposes, he's okay with it, but I'm the one holding the ladder shaking, so. But anyways, I recently met with Matt Giesi and JJ Larson regarding the proposal, as I have heard that the Public Works now has equipment to safely maintain and display the flags. I want to thank Matt and JJ for meeting me, and JJ had offered to do some research with other communities as to how they handle their flag displaying. And Matt, thanks for putting me on the agenda tonight with Memorial Day coming up in a few days. I placed an order for 20 new flags and three spinner poles, and they will arrive this week, replacing the damaged flags and poles from last year. The flags are placed at their locations beginning Memorial Day weekend and are removed after Veterans Day. So they are up from that, the Memorial Day holiday to Veterans Day, only because of the fact that with every holiday to take our time to go out, put them up, take them down, we just find it more convenient for us to just leave them up. However, the elements take a toll on the flags, and if damage is reported, I know the village has gotten a call, which then they would call me, and then I would call Mark, and he would graciously go out and remove the flag with his ladder upon my request. When those damaged flags would come down, we did not replace them. So you might go through an intersection and see two flags here and only one flag over here. It just depended on the amount of damage to that specific flag. Thankfully, the fundraiser account has an adequate amount to have supported the reordering of flags and poles damaged by the elements over the past three years and will continue support, to support now and in the future. So there, I believe, is probably enough funds for the next two years. So tonight I'm here to ask the board to consider that the village take on the future responsibility to proudly and safely display our American flags in Cottage Grove. The responsibility should not fall on two people. In closing, if it takes a village to raise a child, why not a village to raise our flags?
Thank you.
JJ has a memo that details thoughts from his department on, on that. So JJ, if you want to maybe summarize a little bit of that, or if there's questions on the board, maybe for Sherry first, whoever you want to handle it.
Go ahead, JJ.
Yeah. Just more than anything, I don't, I don't want to be a stick in the mud, but if we're going to be taking on another duty for Public Works Department, I just want to have board buy-in and backing, I suppose, to kind of clearly direct the expectations. If a flag comes down, I mean, that was one of the lines in my memo, is are we authorized to call somebody in overtime? And just because it will take time to set up the bucket truck and remove a damaged flag or things like that. So I think there's a financial perspective, I suppose. I don't know to what extent it would be. It's probably not all that significant, but I definitely want some clear direction. Because I guess if we're going to do it with the village truck, I want to make sure that we're doing it right. So I guess that'd be, that'd kind of summarize my thoughts on it. And as to the group, I've gotten just a handful of responses and there's really nothing consistent. Different communities have volunteer groups do it. A few of them, it is a public works budget item annually, the replacement and parts. And some don't do anything. Some have, they contracted out with private entities to maintain. So it's all over the board. So it's just kind of, that's, I guess, what I'd be looking for is just some clear direction.
So no matter how good of a flag you buy, putting it up at Memorial Day and waiting till Veterans Day probably shortens the life and just...
When I talked with the gal that I've dealt with over the years at display sales, there's two types of flags you can get. You can get a polyester or I forget what they call the other one. But one is heavier than the other. And the polyester is the heavier one, so if it rains, it will take longer to dry. And if it wraps around, it's heavier, so it tangles. And even with the spinner pole, because sometimes, I don't know if you, any of you have noticed, if you go through the intersection, sometimes you'll see a flag kind of tangled. But then when the wind direction changes, it's nylon. That's the other, that's what we order. The nylon flag is lighter weight, so if it gets wet, it dries faster. And if it tangles, like I said, if the winds blow in this way and it tangles this way, and then the wind blows back this way or whatever direction, it'll untangle. Where with the polyester, because it's heavier, it will stick, so to speak. So I have gone with the nylon for the reasons of the layer weight. And even so, either flag, I was told, has about a 90-day life before it starts to rattle. And last year, we had some awful weather, and by the time we took, we, he took the flags down, yeah, we had like 16 of them that I took down to ace for proper destruction. So we still got four flags that are usable, but I went ahead and ordered 20 so that if we have to replace, we've got four to, you know, use to, for replacement. Some of the poles even bent, which is another reason I went with the nylon and not the polyester, because if they get wet and the wind is really blowing, even the nylon flags, even though they're spinners, we had, what, three poles? Well, one disappeared totally. Tried to track it down and never did find it. But the other three were totally bent, so.
What does each, do each flags cost?
The nylon ones are $19 apiece, and the polyester are 26-plus, and the spinner poles are $17. I don't have a price on what the brackets were, but the brackets are all in place, so we don't replace them.
So pole and flag is about 40 bucks apiece, their boats?
Yeah.
But you don't have to replace a pole every time.
Right. And I'm fine with Public Works doing this. I agree. Certainly it could be safer having you guys do it than, I don't know that I climb up a ladder and hold up against a round pole. It'd have to be kind of square.
Especially this intersection. The other one, you can use a reg, regular...
The ones over the top of the stop and go lights, you have to use a 28-foot ladder to, to get all far enough to get over the light. But the other ones, I've got a little 16-foot extension ladder. I can hop up into those pretty easy.
How many times did you have to fix the flags last year?
Three or four.
Yeah.
Well, we removed...
Took a couple of them down because they were so tattered.
Yeah.
And then one totally disappeared. That was down at Commerce Park. That's when they were building culvers. I went over there to see if anybody saw a flag. And I searched the fields. I have no clue where it went. It just disappeared.
Maybe Summit found it this year.
Yeah?
Yeah.
So JJ, it's not a terrible expense or time commitment. There's some, but not, um...
We'll see. I suppose that's, I mean, it is going to be, setting up the bucket truck is going to be longer than leaning up a ladder each time. I guess that's why I just want, I just want direction from the board that this is, you know, something that's a priority, I suppose.
Kind of unknown overtime.
Is, who puts up the, I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
Who puts up the holiday lights?
Downtown, that's the Houston's downtown.
Houston's again.
And that is more typical of the responses I did get, is that I think our areas might be even rougher on the flags where we have them out here just because of the height and the wind that whips through. The lot, most of the responses I got are from their traditional downtown, you know, like right down on Main Street where the Houston's do it, where they don't take nearly the beating. You put them up and they're, they're there.
Yeah. That's the bad intersection there. And then Commerce Park because it's more wide open, so.
Any other questions?
Do we take on this responsibility? Houston can still continue to do downtown, right?
Yes.
They won't bail out and say, well, now the village...
I've been, I've been approached unofficially about doing stuff down there too. Nothing in an official way, I don't think, yet. But I just, I said, we have to go through the proper channels before we take on something else.
And Mark and I, because of the short notice and the holiday coming up, we will from Memorial Day weekend be out and we will put them up. The ones that are up, they're up, like I said. So...
I, I guess I'd like to see, moving forward, when we decide, if we decide to do this, a line item on a budget as to what it's going to cost. The other thing, and thank you both for doing this, but we've probably taken on some liability in case someone had gotten hurt doing this?
Nah, we just go out and do it. It's our responsibility, so.
Falling off of ladders, you know, not a pleasant thing, falling hurt.
I'm underneath them.
I don't see you cushioning the blow that much.
Maybe after the first season, you could probably come up with a ballpark figure for budget of what it's going to cost.
Yep. And that's what I, I'm going to follow up with a few of these folks and see what they, I mean, it is, it does sound like there's a significant, not significant, you know, grand scheme of things, but, you know, people typically budget to replace all their flags. It sounds like annually. So, yeah, I could come up with an idea of what it's going to be.
So there's 20 flags?
Yeah. As a sign, the village manages the account for the funds that are there. So like I said, what we've ordered for the displaying for this year, if we do the same in the next two years to come, we, we, you have enough funding for flag replacement. And I understand the cost with the labor. I totally get that. And that's why, you know, I'd like to propose that maybe the village consider this. I've also approached the Cottage Grove Chamber with the concern for the cost, maybe taking on after the two years, funding for the flag replacements. But that's probably minimal to what the labor cost will be. So that's my biggest concern with this proposal.
All right. Any other questions?
I'd like to also thank you both for taking on this initiative. Couple items. The House Chamber of Commerce, I know the American Legion makes donations. So if the board does decide to take this on, we could reach out through the Chamber of Commerce, through the other civic organizations, and through the newspaper to maybe just solicit donations for this cause. And it does look great. Another option the board could consider and maybe alleviate some of JJ's concerns is we pick certain weekends and leave it up from like Friday till Monday or Tuesday, whatever it is, Memorial Day, you know, Veterans Day.
So you're not going up on a holiday or weekend?
Veterans Day, and we're not leaving them up there for the full summer, which it does look nice, but, you know, it does get weathered and tethered and wrapped around. So that could alleviate some of the possible overtime issues because they're only up for three or four days at a time.
Okay.
There's 15, between 1,500 and 1,600 in the account that Sherry mentioned.
I'm, I'm fine with us taking over this. If there's no objection, then...
I guess maybe I'm just naive. I just assumed we, that was the responsibility of the community. Thank you.
That's why I did the summary. Because I said, there's a lot of new faces and, you know, that too, when people, you know, talk about the flags and they go, you're the one that's doing this? Why not the village? And I said, well, it's not the budget.
So if we did it, would, would we do it before they put up the flags or...
They said they were going to put them up for Memorial Day and then...
So then we're just going to take over the responsibility of fixing the flags?
Or replacing the flag or...
Through the summer, yeah.
Yeah. And JJ can coordinate it so they're not, like John said, not coming out on weekends or holidays to do it.
Wouldn't that take longer to go and put them up and take them down every week and just go and fix one?
Yeah, you could just replace them every season. I mean, they're not huge expense.
Yeah, but there's times throughout the year where a flag or multiple flags get ripped down or hanging there by one of the highlights.
They don't need to make it through the summer, Bradley.
Well, you said you fixed them three to four times last year.
Right. And that's why I ordered the 20 and saved the four that are still usable as replacement.
I don't think we had any backups last year.
And then Lisa would call you about needing a flag fixed, or is that what you had said?
I'm...
No, we're just noticed.
Or just whoever would contact you if they...
Yeah, Matt's got...
Yeah, if somebody saw one was damaged, they would just naturally come here.
Sure.
Just like she just said, nobody really knows how they get there. They just magically appear.
So then it wouldn't be on the weekend when overtime would be?
Yeah. I mean, it's not that it's something that's that urgent that would have to be done, you know, as long as it...
But respectfully, within a decent amount of time.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Mark, if you're not going to be climbing ladders anymore and you're not making presentations on behalf of the firemen, I mean, what, what do you, do you have anything to do now or...
Oh, I'm still climbing ladder.
Okay, all right. I want to make sure.
But there's one thing I was just sitting here thinking, well, I don't know how much longer.
I understand.
Is there a motion to approve the request?
I make a motion to approve the request that the village take over.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second to approve taking over the request after Memorial Day for the American Pride campaign. Any other discussion?
Just add one point of clarification. Are we going to keep them up all summer then? Is that the direction? I think JJ's kind of looking for direction for the staff and overtime and...
You know, it almost sounds like, I guess you have to play it better. If it lasts all summer, great. But if we notice, it's kind of the same. If you notice it, just mark it down, log it, replace it, I guess.
But as opposed to weekly, I think is what you meant, right?
Instead of every holiday? Yeah. Yeah, that, that could get a lot with the bucket truck. Okay, so leave it up.
And that could be changed, you know, in the future after this, this season, we'll see how it goes and then...
Do you think you could get clarification from other communities as to how long it would take you? Or you just go, I mean, that's a concern of yours about...
We'll just find out, I suppose.
Try it once and see how long it takes. Okay.
And I guess could we make sure it's a line item on the budget moving forward then too?
Yep. And then put it, yeah, and you're okay with that?
Yep.
So then... Well, it's a separate fund, right? I mean, for at least the cost of the flags, but keep that a separate, yeah. So we'll just keep it separate and then a line item for labor, right?
It would be American Pride, flag, whatever, whatever you want to call it.
So does that mean that he has to find room in the budget right now?
For his public works, he would work it in there.
Because they have the flags for this year.
Unless he wants to come and free them.
Well, are, are you paying for the 20 flags?
If they're bought and...
They're what I've paid for.
They'll be here tomorrow or Wednesday. Friday, I'll assemble them, and Saturday morning, they go up.
So our real expense wouldn't be immediate. It would be the next batch of the flags.
I just want to make sure because Matt said there was, I was trying to, wasn't sure how much is in the kitty right now, but just to make sure.
Uh, we have, well, you know...
He says there was 1,500 and 1,600.
Yeah, there's enough for, this year and two more years.
Okay.
And what we, we ordered is pretty standard, what we've done in the past, so.
All right. That sounds pretty solid then.
All right. Thank you very much.
What is the motion and the second? Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes? Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the hard work.
Uh, A. D. discussed first draft of village board list of priorities. You see that a lot of the attachments here in your packet, 2018 prioritization process.
Yep. So, so waiting for some more to come in. So I don't know if you'd like to discuss it tonight or wait till there's more. Did get, did get another submitted over the weekend, but, you know.
I'm, I'm fine with waiting until they're all here because it's easier to put them all on the same blank slate, I guess, for lack of a better term. And that's fine. Any other thoughts on that or...
Motion table.
Okay. Your second.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion second to table. Till next meeting and see where we're at. Any other discussion?
I just have a question. So you received three, you received the fourth over the weekend. And the other three, you maybe set a deadline as to, one you need to buy and so we can discuss it.
Yeah. I mean, next meeting is fine.
Fine, but you need it by, um.
We can, by June fourth, yeah.
Before June fourth.
We're put, we, we put the packet together, I mean, we're doing it all week, but like to have it done by midday, ideally on Friday, so.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause you have to put it all together in one, so when they come in, you have to then put it into the home home.
Yep, so it can all get distributed.
So the sooner you get some, the easier it is.
And you could see from some of the examples, I mean, it doesn't, um, you could provide, I mean, it could be as short or as long as you, as you'd like, you know, um, so.
I mean, some of the things I anticipate here is you'd find commonalities between the things and kind of those on.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to show there is, you know, there's, you're not gonna maybe have exact similarities, but if there's something that's in about the same category, it probably doesn't make much sense to separate those individually.
Right.
And there's also no rush to this, but I, I would think the board would like to get it done before budget, so.
Yeah.
You know, we might have to complete this this summer.
All right, so if the second's okay, or first and second's okay with that, to by June fourth at noon?
Well, that's the village board meeting day. So it would be June first.
June first at noon, sorry, okay. All right, motion and second to, uh, table till, well, till the next meeting, but with a deadline of June first at noon. Is there any other second on that? Okay, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. And here down to item A, or B rather, discuss and consider operators licenses for renewal here July twenty eighteen to June twenty nineteen for the attached list of individuals everybody is able to access. I think we can do them all at once, if anybody has any questions on any of them.
Chief, there's no issue with the list?
No, they passed their package.
I, I, I move to approve all on the list.
Second.
Okay, motion and second to approve the list of operator license renewals for June twenty eighteen to June twenty nineteen, and, um, any other discussion?
I just have one question under it, so it's typically the reoccurring businesses each year that, that go into this, I can't understand that, but, um, what do we say for like stopping while there's only one individual that can sell alcohol? Do we go, do we go back and ask them, or do they, I mean?
They're aware of it, and you're gonna see another list at the next board meeting, because they have until the end of June. I was just trying to get ahead, because I had, um, quite a list established already.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And John, what, what we've, what you find is that, um, sometimes the board has to make a decision, are you gonna chase people down for them to get their licenses, or, you know, do they come in, and we've been pretty lucky here, but I've had other municipalities where it seemed like we were literally going to the establishment saying, oh, can't be open tomorrow, so.
Yeah, we don't wanna do that.
Thank you.
All right, so the motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. A, F, discuss and consider developers agreement for Quarry Ridge, I think that's down on the bottom of that list of attachments there.
Yeah, um, the Paulson, uh, Quarry Ridge subdivision was, um, started, uh, by the Paulsons, uh, in about the early two thousand, Bill Paulson, and, um, there have been several groups that have expressed interest in taking over, uh, the development, and at this point Nate Snyder, who's here tonight, uh, in the back, uh, of A and M Management, um, has agreed to take over the, um, the development. The advantage that we have here is that this, the developer agreement, for all practical purposes, is, is done. Um, we're not gonna really deviate from that, um, there's some updating, uh, of it, which we're in the process of doing, but, um, we bring it here tonight, um, for the board, for the board's information and, um, to, uh, an approval to give us, uh, direction to get this finalized. Um, so, uh, I, I believe that there are seventy-eight lots. And, um, I included the phase plan for you.
Yep.
And, um, uh, and I included the, uh, previous developer agreement, this will simply be, um, an amendment, and I have, I think, all of the engineering materials. Um, Mike was, uh, being a star of his son's team, getting his picture taken tonight, so that's why he couldn't be here right away. But, um, I think that we're good to go here, unless, uh, anyone has any questions.
Mike, did you have anything to add to this at all, or just?
Nope, um, they're, uh, you know, building that, that first phase, as you can see, extending Molly Lane, um, got a surety of, of about one point nine million. There's about, uh, a hundred thousand dollars with the fees, and about, uh, forty-two thousand of that is with Madison Met, which basically passes directly to Madison Met. The other ones are park fees and that, so, um, those are all spelled out for the nineteen lots you're gonna build. And we'll be extending sewer, um, to the, uh, main that's been waiting for them in the commerce park, uh, to the edge of the plat.
Okay.
So it's all ready for that to go. Um, so, once the developer disagreement's approved, then we'll get a lane disturbance previously, get started on phase one.
Aaron, anything for your analysis?
No, I think it's pretty well in hand, just a few details to nuble.
Okay. Does this, the amendment include the change in the, the cost of light poles?
Yes, and also the, um, um,
the.
Sunset clause?
The sunset clause, as far as the oversizing is concerned, and.
That was a request from the auditors to get in the developer agreement, that there's a, um, a time period where if, if the, that we, that basically can't come back at the village for costs at, after a certain point, just so things don't stay in the books for a long time, 'cause as you can see, a development like this can last a long time, 'cause it can change hands from different developers, so.
Okay, any other questions?
So we're past that time period?
Yeah, yes, it is, yes we are.
All right.
Yes, we are.
I'll make a motion to approve the developers agreement and direct staff to, uh, do what they need to do to finalize the, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, and motion passes.
I have a good feeling about this, 'cause we've seen Nate now for at least a year, so that's, uh, that's been very popular.
Okay. Reports from village boards, committees, and commissions and committees, sorry, utility committees.
Okay, we met, uh, May ninth. Um, we did receive the, uh, two thousand seventeen compliance maintenance annual report, um, all meeting the standard, or in many cases exceeding the standard, so, uh, kudos to JJ and the, uh, the staff. Um, one initiative that the chair's taken on himself is, uh, possibly lighting the North Water Tower near the interstate across the summit, coming only from Milwaukee, because if you're coming from Madison, there's like forests and trees, so you really can't see the water tower, but, uh, to prominently light, uh, during certain hours, maybe up until ten or eleven, we don't have the final recommendation yet, but, uh, looking for some sort of solar or reduced energy, uh, to light the water tower, so as people are driving by, um, they can actually see, hey, Scott Grove and there's Summit, and there's a business park there, so more to follow on that, but that's the, uh, the lighting of the North Water Tower topic. Other than that, JJ, did I miss anything? Uh, we may or may not meet in June, uh, just due to agenda items as well as, uh, a number of other things, but, uh, that's it.
Okay, and Joanna Williams will be trying to be on utility, I confirmed that with her again.
Okay.
So, she wasn't able to make the last one, even though she agreed to be on it, but.
Got it, okay, thanks.
Yep. All right, plan commission, discuss and consider approval of the site plan application from Learning Ladder daycare for a new garage shed building at three twelve West Cottage Grove Road. You'll see some documents in there, is the applicant here to name? Okay, Joanna, come on here, please, and Erin, I'll let you discuss that, I was not able to make the last plan commission meeting.
Yeah, this was approved unanimously at the last plan commission, uh, basically the applicants are just looking to do a garage slash shed, uh, to store vehicles and strollers onsite. Um, since it'd be an accessory building, a metal building, the use, the setbacks and everything are fine. Uh, the area that they're building it is currently a concrete slab, so they're not adding any impervious area, it's right up against the existing parking lot. Um, the main issue of discussion at the plan commission was dressing up the front of the building a little bit more. Um, the conditions we settled on at that meeting are listed in the village action report, uh, that's adding shake, shingles in the gable end of the front. The plan commission encouraged planters on either side of the front door, um, providing evergreen shrubs along the first twenty feet of the north end of the east facade, which is a little more visible than the west side. And then, um, we added the condition that the garage door shall include one row of windows, that's, that was the plan anyway, but they just.
Okay, so you're okay with this?
Yep.
Okay, any questions from board members for the applicants? Is there a motion to approve?
A motion that we approved, we're building this.
Okay, your second?
Second.
Motion and second to approve the request from Learning Ladder for a new garage shed building at three twelve West Cottage Grove Road, any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, and good bill.
Thanks for your patience. Stay here for a couple hours, isn't it?
Very. Moving on, community development authority.
Okay, so, we met on May fourteenth, um, essentially spent the meeting reviewing the TIF feasibility report from Allers for TITS eight, nine, and ten. And preparing for, we have a public meeting tomorrow, uh, right after another prior meeting related to the TITS, uh, for this, so it's short, sweet.
Okay.
All right, peer court, Erin?
Uh, we met on the fifteenth, uh, last Tuesday, um, Tammy from Briar Patch came, and she had just amazing, uh, things to say about our community, 'cause, you know, she oversees, uh, the Briar Patch, she's actually the one that puts that report together each, each, um, time for us, and, uh, she, her quotes were that, uh, we've been very busy in Cottage Grove, um, or they've been very busy, and that, that they're excited, because it seems like here, at least, everything goes clockwork, it's like clockwork. Um, she commented, um, that out of the thirty-two referrals that they got, thirty-two people were seeing, where in some communities, it's, you know, they might have fifty-eight referrals, and only nine actually show up for the peer court.
So our percentage is pretty good.
Yeah, yeah, no, we're, we're the highest in there, and so she was very impressed, and she commented the, uh, the success stories, that there are a lot less repeat offenders, um, so it's actually, I mean, it's a great system and it's working, so.
All right, sounds good. Deer Grove EMS Commission?
Where do you wanna go?
Um, a little bit, if you can add, John, that'd be great. Uh, we met last, uh, last Thursday, um, did, uh, lectures in new officers, Chris Hampton is the chair, and Greg, I can't think of his last name.
Bruce Rutter.
Yeah, yes, yeah, from the village of Deerfield, is secretary. Um, we, uh, approved the contract for emergency medical services with the town of Deerfield, um, discussed a couple of ideas and what we're gonna do with the funds with the town of Deerfield, um, discussed and considered the Cambridge area EMS, uh, contract with them, and they don't really need the services, but we have a contract now that doesn't really have an end date, so if they need it, they need to give us a, a notice and we'll be able to help them. Uh, hiring manager, uh, what is that, John? You guys are?
The office manager?
The office manager, the voice guy.
For Kim?
For Kim, yes. So, uh, right now there's, you know, a handful of candidates in the pool, it doesn't close out, I think, until the end of this month, as far as applicants to get in, and then we'll begin, uh, the interview process to hopefully get someone in there to have a little bit of overlap before, uh, Kim's time is up, but.
And I, I, the goal is to have it start by the eighteenth, and have two weeks with the current, uh, county manager.
The overlap is probably gonna be.
Yeah, and, and, you know, there's gonna be some things, just not enough time to, to work with them on, but, uh, so that's the goal.
All right.
Uh, what else here? Um, monitors, there's, there's an issue with our monitors in the ambulances.
They don't like the batteries anymore, and they're not supporting them?
No, uh, it, it'll show that, uh, it'll show that you're not alive when you're sitting there breathing next to them.
That's a problem.
It's an inadvertent problem that continues to get worse, uh, so some discussion on how to get three new monitors with trade-ins, uh, ninety-seven thousand and some odd change, uh, so there was some discussion with, uh, using the funds from Deerfield, uh, which is about seventeen thousand dollars this year, um, we have twelve thousand in cash, uh, and, and then the second year, we could make a payment with the town of Deerfield funds, which is gonna be thirty-two, thirty-three thousand and some odd change. There's also, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars in the association from a donation that we could apply in the, um, in the second year, and the balance, again, uh, would be, um, town of Deerfield funds. Did I get that right, John? Yeah?
We'd be budgeted then.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, the, the issue has come up that these particular monitors are no longer be produced, the parts are, instead, they're not gonna make those either.
Right, Phil, we have the same problem, Phil's monitors aren't being supported anymore.
So.
So we got a goal or life act to consider.
Right, so there's a scramble by a lot of.
None of them are cheap.
No, scrambled by a lot of municipalities, services, to address this issue, because again, they're just not getting supported, uh, very soon. And ours are now having, even though they check out, when the, when the rep comes to, to look at our service, we have these intermittent problems that continue to crop up, and it's, it's becoming a major issue, where, you know, where we wanna make sure we're, uh, having these monitors be able to work properly. Again, they're working properly, but then you have an intermittent problem, and that's.
They've had the service techs out, and, uh, of course, they work fine when the service tech is there, so if we could keep a service tech full-time, and I don't think we'd have to purchase any at that point, but, uh.
Okay. All right, and then one other, just kind of a related item, we were talking, I think, last time when we approved the contract for Deerfield, about how much we're gonna be spending out there on calls and stuff, and if I heard it right from Ryan Brothers, I think there were four or five calls all of last month in the town of Deerfield, so it's not a huge.
It's about a hundred calls a year, is what Deerfield is, the, the town of Deerfield.
Town of Deerfield, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and I guess I should say that our calls this, uh, this year to date are three hundred and thirty-one versus two eighty-four last year. So in theory, with more calls, we're getting more revenue.
Yep.
Um, part of that was because of the contract with, uh, with Cambridge.
Yeah.
The next meeting is, uh, June twenty-first in Deerfield. Um, did I miss anything, John?
Uh, we have the collective bargaining agreement that we're working with the union.
Okay, is that your agreement, or is that?
Three.
Oh, and then I guess we did, uh, at this point, we've, no further pursuits by Cambridge or anybody else for, um, consolidation, so that, that, that's been dropped, uh, the discussion's been dropped.
That's a big animal to tackle.
Yeah.
All right, all right, reports from village officers, Troy, anything else?
No report.
Okay, James?
No report.
All right, Jeff?
Um, I don't really have anything to report, but Matt, I do, and Lisa, I want to apologize, I am the guy that came in over the weekend, I, I thought we could do it before.
It's okay.
Monday.
It's okay, there's, there's not a rush.
Okay.
Okay, all right, Melissa?
Um, I just want to say thank you to staff, 'cause every time I call, I always get answers, so I appreciate that.
All right, uh, John, I know you had a memo here that you passed out someplace here.
And it's essentially just the notes from the government one oh one last, Melissa and I attended a couple of weeks ago, uh, just, I do have a thick binder, and there's some good information, uh, maybe as we get closer to budget time that I can pass along to, so it's just an overview of that. Also wanna thank, uh, Jack for use of Village Hall here last evening, uh, Lisa for giving me the key and showing me how to use the IT equipment, but there was a basically a facility overview for the school board, uh, the survey results were presented, um, and a facilitated two-hour discussion with about forty-five citizen members. I did present the, uh, discussion points to the superintendent here today, so if anyone's interested in that, uh, see me afterwards, but they do plan on going to the school board on Monday, or, excuse me, Wednesday, uh, to present some of their ideas, and it's gonna be a continued discussion until the school board decides what to do.
Okay.
Long, long and short of it was, uh, Long and short of it was, it was kind of a, what I gathered, and Melissa, thanks for coming. The citizens that attended thought it was a short-term fix for...
A long-term problem.
Correct. It's kind of what I passed along, so...
John, what is the timetable for the school district to make a decision?
So they need to make a decision by August 27th to be on the fall ballot.
All right.
Maybe something, something to note as board members, if you're ever aware of a time that you may be somewhere, like a meeting like that, where there's gonna be more than two, and there wasn't, but if you, if there's a chance for that, just to send Lisa and I an email, we can try to post it as a possible quorum.
Thought about that after the fact.
That's what we did, yeah.
Yeah. We've been pretty aggressive about just doing that, and reminding other municipalities.
So to answer Jeff's question about the smell test, I think this group of individuals will continue to be more vocal. Kind of competing with this is, it was brought up Wednesday when the survey results were presented to the Facility Advisor Committee and the School Board, is Manona is in need of expanding their emergency services capability and facilities, so it might be a dash to the ballot. So if Manona needs to build another police station or fire department or EMS, that's obviously not our problem out here, but it could compete with the school referendum.
Absolutely. Okay. All right, John?
No report.
Okay. Under my name, you'll see, discuss and consider both trustee committee and commission appointments and citizens. I think we could, or should we send out a list, or is it more than that? I don't remember when we sent the last one out, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, and like I said, Joanna Williams was the last one that confirmed for the Utility Commission, and I think you and Jeff did a slot next week.
Yeah, I also, I had meant to be on the EMS Commission as an alternate.
Okay.
In addition to the joint fire.
Yep.
So I got on the joint fire last time, but not the EMS.
This is a big document, and it's always sending, so everybody that can take a look at what your committee assignments are, make sure you're good with that, and then if you have any names for vacancies, obviously let me know.
Jack, did you get any confirmation from Kyle? He's mentioned last time, I think, that you reached out.
I had texted him, and once I told him it was only once a month, I'm taking that as a yes, but I'm gonna have to give him a call, because he seemed interested in it.
He's good with Plan Commission. You might want to confirm. I think he was asked to be on the second one, and I don't think he was able to do both, or potentially it was a conflict of interest.
Yeah, he just wanted to make sure it was only once a month, the plan. I'm like, yeah, it's always the second Wednesday, so. All right, I'll have an update with Kyle then. I think that's all I have at that point. Lee?
I talked too much tonight, so I'm, no report.
You're good, okay. Matt?
We're very hopeful that there's some good economic development news to report soon, so keep your fingers crossed, and I can talk to you individually, it's just confidential yet, so. And then at the next, under future agenda items, we can mention this too, but we finished again in a positive net position. We'll have the audit report here next, at the next meeting, I believe, so that's good as well.
Did Jimmy Jones give a date when they're gonna start building? I thought it was pretty soon, but of course, it's not a big project really either, but...
Lisa, did they take a building permit?
Jimmy Jones?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. I know it's a slab on grade, so it's not a big deal, but, okay. All right. Aaron, anything else?
The newest version of the Madison Region Economic Development Magazine is out. You all got a copy there. That's the one we do our ad in.
Looks good.
I've been the past few years. You have two boxes of them. If you find yourself going somewhere where you might hand them out, you can get some from me, and I'll give them to you.
Okay. Do you labor, anything else?
No report.
All right. Anything else, KJ, or Sean?
We're good. Check, check. Do we need to consider any of these appointments, like the ones expiring in 2018 underneath here?
Here we go. Yeah, we probably could. I can put that on for the next...
Since discussing, consider Citizen Committee.
May 15th, yeah. Yeah, since it's under the agenda item, we can, everybody can, got the list ready, you can see, okay? I know Ron will be on finance, Larry Geeks on Emergency Government. Yeah, that looks correct to me. I guess, I assumed Fred's appointment was next year, but I guess that was wrong.
So did Mick say that he would?
Mick has not gotten back to me, so I guess with the exception of Mick, if we could prove it, with the exception of Mick, ask him again as well. I did ask him once, and he didn't get an answer back, so.
So will Jim stay on there if Mick doesn't?
Jim needs, wants us to get off, so...
Yeah, he does want to get off.
We'll have to have a vacancy, and, you know, we'll have to be a citizen member. I know Jim had something else he needed to be doing, so. All right, so I guess with the exception of Mick Conrad, I'll make a motion to approve the committee member appointments that you have on the list here. Any second?
I will.
Okay. Motion and second to approve the committee member appointments with the exception of Mick Conrad on Community Development Authority. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, and motion passes.
And then Ken, for me as alternate on EMS, you hear that?
Yes, I'll, I'll make a separate motion to appoint Melissa as an alternate on Deer Grove EMS Commission. That's right, joint committees with the town, you try to have an alternate in place all the time. Is there a second for Melissa?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to appoint Melissa as an alternate for Deer Grove EMS. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, okay. We're going down to Communications and Miscellaneous Business, discuss or consider approval of vouchers. Any comments, questions on the vouchers this month?
Got a couple.
Sure.
This may be for JJ, possibly the, or somebody, crack filling service corp? Is that just, like, all the streets and you're still going through and making sure?
If there are any old crack fillers.
Nothing unusual there when you come across them.
No doubt.
And then this, the painting return of Cerati, is that just something, the 5,000 to New Tech Paint, so?
If you could mention the pa, the page number.
Oh, I'm sorry. Page number seven.
Okay.
Right above the middle.
6041 is the...
They had some conditions on approval for their CSM. They put a deposit down to guarantee they would do the work, and they've done it.
Okay.
So they paid the 5,000 in, now they're getting...
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, what is on page six about the middle, K and R Concrete for the curb and gutter? Where is that at?
That was actually a few spots, more than just that one section that they did stretch up with a hill. It's been failing for years, and another piece down, Duncan Court. Basically, they just did, or had to curb and gutter it later, because they weren't able to get anywhere, so that's where they lost.
Then I had a question, this is about, there was a page eight, Commerce Park Street Light Repair. Just curious.
That was just a part out of the summit, and that's gonna be moved. We're gonna meet with Fendor here in the future, it's gonna get moved, but it got hit, and it wasn't clear that it was marked on our part, so we had to have them safety it off, basically, because we hadn't moved anything, so that's...
Okay. I'm just curious, because there wasn't much, and I'm like...
Anything else?
I move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the vouchers. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, and motion passes. Correspondents, I don't think I have anything official. We all got the Madison Magazine, which is good, and the other report here from Johnson Block, and that you're Deer Grove EMS. All right, future agenda items?
Building inspector contract.
Yep, building inspector.
Hey, John Williams, when is Chief Matja? Is he gonna come here on the 4th, or is it the, to talk about the monitors?
Fourth.
Yeah, so Chief, EMS chief is gonna be here on the 4th to discuss the monitors in more detail.
Okay, perfect.
So we can make sure we have a line item or...
Probably being, no new business or whatever, as well, Deer Grove EMS, whichever you want to...
And you wanted him earlier in the meeting.
Yeah, so that's a good, whole meeting I'm gonna move him up to the end of the...
I think he's wide open, so...
Okay.
Yeah, this is a military board member, so if you ever notice someone, maybe it's an item that, that you're, you know, particularly attuned to, or you know of someone that's here, you can, you can just make a request to, to jack a motion and...
Yep.
Move anything around.
Yeah.
But on a night like this, when it's so crowded, it's hard to really move around, because you're gonna, you're gonna be sticking someone last, and so, but anyway, just as a note.
We told him to keep an under an hour.
Three minutes.
The prioritization list, yeah.
Yeah, the bond sale for the sewer improvements in TIT 7, Forest Main and Lift Station.
All right.
And then the audit review.
Audit review, yeah. Anything else?
Do we have an update on TIT 7?
Yeah, sure. We can update from the Joint Review Board and CDA meetings.
Has ever decided on that for Ridge?
Oh, the bridge from Oberg?
Well, it's a negotiation, so it could be a future closed session.
Okay, gotcha.
So we could post that, we don't need it, we don't need it.
There is some activity with that, so it probably would be at the next meeting as well.
Okay.
All right. Anything else? Okay. So we got, so another closed session. At this point, I'll make a motion that the Village of Cottage Grove Board enters into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 1985, herein one fair and eve, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. This closed session is to discuss negotiating position for development agreement with EDS Metrocom. Is there a motion? I'm, I'm hoping a second, so. All right, we'll need a roll call motion.
Lindbergh?
Aye.
Enreck?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.